Good evening. This is the Guilford Board of Education. It is Monday, February 10th. Welcome to our regular meeting. I ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a number of meeting minutes here to consider. The first, January 13th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
Some moved.
Second. Any comments or corrections? I have a couple. One, very small, on page one, under number five. The total amount of expenditures that were reported by Mr. Del Antura, there's just one digit off. So it's $5,809,460.99 instead of the $69. On page two, very, very last line, lots of numbers in this, in these minutes to keep track of. It's discussing the proposed budget and identifying the amount of the increase. And then my last correction is on the last paragraph of page three, which is just the first sentence. Dr. Bauschacy noted that board members have been provided with budget books to review, and she recommended they, for any questions, to her, not Dr. Freeman, for sending to Mrs. Trudeau. Any other comments, questions, corrections? All right. So minutes have, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right. Thank you. Monday, January 27th, meeting minutes. These are meeting minutes from our first public forum.
Dr. Bauschacy, before we ask for a motion to approve, I was just going to ask if we could vote to hold our approval of the minutes. Like, after reviewing the video of our meeting, I would just ask if we could have the time to properly reflect the comments that were made, be documented on page two of the minutes. Mr. Jeff Ambrosiak, I would just ask that we be given the time for those minutes to be properly recorded per the video recording of the meeting.
Okay. So you're just asking that we hold on review of these minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
We can look at that and more fully represent the comments that were made in that section, bring it back to you for approval at your next meeting. Terry and I can work on that together.
Thank you.
And we don't need to vote on that. I think we can simply pause.
I think you're just tabling the minutes.
Yeah. No, no, no. No, it's a great, okay. Okay. So what we're going to do is then hold on a vote of the January 27th meeting minutes, finalizing until next month. All right. Next, January 28th, meeting minutes. This was the second night of the public forum.
Can I ask a question again?
You sure can.
So, much in the same vein, on page two, under Mr. Lou Monaco's comments, I would just ask that we could hold vote on this set of minutes so that we can properly reflect the comments that were made.
We can rewrite both of those and make them more fully reflect the tenor of each of those comments.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I just add, just a couple spelling errors? Just Ms. Reader's name is misspelled a couple of times in the minutes on page.
Thank you.
On page four, and I think page two or one, I'm sorry.
I saw that too. Thank you.
And then just Guilford's misspelled on page two, under the fourth paragraph.
Okay. So, unless anyone's concerned, then what we can do is hold on voting on these tonight, get a chance to revisit, and then we can vote on them next month.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that? All right. Last meeting minutes to approve, January, also Tuesday, January 28th. This is an earlier meeting that evening between the Guilford Board of Education, the Guilford Board of Selectmen, and the Guilford Board of Finance, which is, this was a meeting for the three boards to meet with Mr. Joe Spurgeon, who is our insurance consultant. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Some moved.
Second. Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone. Thank you. All right. We're now at number four, which is public comments for topics on the meeting agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on topics on the agenda? All right. Hearing none. Number five, review and approval of the expenditures for the month of January in this current year. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you. Sorry, I totally forgot I was in charge of that. The expenditures for the month of January were $8,884,738.89. This represents 56.7% of the budget as compared to 54.83% last year. In terms of revenue, we have received some revenue. There was $13,000 for tuition from Clinton, $3,108.88 for Medicaid, $1,425.93 for non-resident tuition, and a big chunk of $26,436 prepaid tuition. This is higher than usual because some families pay half at the beginning of the year and half in the middle of the year. So that represents that high number. Pretty much everything, salaries are higher, benefits expended is higher, purchase services is lower, tuition is in line, capital is lower, and we have paid some recent capital leases and submitted the reimbursements, and those should be coming soon. The total of the warrants this month was $2,881,447.4.
All right. So the higher or lower and in line are comparisons with last year at this time. The board did discuss the financial report and the warrants more extensively in the Operations Committee just prior to this meeting. But before we vote, just want to give an opportunity for anyone, if you have additional comments or questions on the finances?
No.
No. All right. Is there a motion to approve the January 2025 financial reports for fiscal year 2425?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications that they would like to report out?
Yep.
Yes.
Dr. Freeman, question for you from some folks at the side of a basketball game. They wanted me to ask about the half-an-Italian teacher that you're thinking of adding. And the question was, will it be challenging to fill half an FTE? And will it be easier to turn it into a full-time FTE and try to have it be someone who would wind up sharing responsibilities across other languages?
So, that's a really interesting question. It might be more challenging to find somebody interested in taking a part-time Italian position than a full-time Italian position. We don't have the demand for a second full-time Italian position at this time. To find somebody who is cross-endorsed in both Italian and another language that we also teach would then be challenging, and we currently have those positions covered with existing staffing. So I could see a position that grows in the future, but it would, I thought you were going to say, would it be easier to find a full-time person? It likely would be, but we may not have, we don't currently have the demand for full-time Italian, and we don't have a demand in French, or Spanish, or Arabic, or Latin at this time to need to add another part-time FTE on top of the current staffing in those languages currently. So the plan for now is to look to fill that, that part-time position. And we believe that we have some contacts, and we believe that we may in fact have some leads, and we believe that we may have the ability to maybe recruit, but a half-time is always more challenging to fill than a full-time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Yeah.
So I've received several communications from parents in the community expressing support for the, and appreciation for the email that you sent on Friday, February 7th, regarding the, any potential immigration issues regarding our student body. So, and one of the suggestions that I've received was that if this email could be in other languages as well, so that parents of any potentially affected children could be informed of it as well.
So I appreciate that. Thank you. And yes, that's a great suggestion. We can certainly have that translated into what we believe will be some, some helpful languages for folks who may need that service. It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Other communications? All right. Up to Sue Rips. How is everyone this evening?
Good.
Excellent.
Okay. So, starting with Guilford Lakes, Friday, January 24th, was a school-wide crazy hair day. Guilford Lakes also presented the extension of Second Step, a child protection unit related to Aaron's Law. This program provided students with information to keep them safe with a focus on personal body safety, including different kinds of touch and safety rules and safety steps. Students also, parents had the option to off their students out. But third grade learned about all three branches of government during an interactive field trip, in which students participated in a play about the government, and second grade continued to learn about fossils with a Zoom call from Dr. Holly Ballard from Oklahoma State University.
And for Melissa Jones, their January Spirit Day was, sorry, Role Reversal Day, so the students got to dress up as a teacher of their choice, and then the teachers dressed up as the students. And then for like events at the school, grade one invited families in to celebrate their sudden patterns, patterns in the sky project. And then grade three invited families to see their frog research project with their, and their collaborative work with their art teacher, Mrs. Kohn. And then for grade, for grade four, they invited families in to share their animal research project. And then they also had like a three-dimensional like figure of like the habitats that went along with their animal. And then throughout February, they're going to use announcements to highlight notable African-Americans who have helped change the world. And then since February's also healthy heart awareness, they're going to have like a fact of the day surrounding that as well in the announcements. And then for Baldwin, they had a lot of musical performance. So over the last three weeks, they've had, they've hosted evening concerts for orchestra, band, and choir. And all of their events were well-attended, and they said they did a good job. And then this Wednesday, February 12th, the sixth-grade band will participate in the district's band jamboree at Adams. And then they recently had an author visit their school. Her name was Allison Gerber, and she spent an hour with the kids talking about writing and inspiration. And her latest book is called The Lyra Society: A Risky Game, and it's a detective like novel that's set in New England. And it's going to come out April 1st. Okay. Well, it's the Florida. And then for after-school clubs, they're starting their winter-spring sessions. And so some of the clubs include chess club, drama club, they have art club, bakers club, and hiking club.
For A.W. Cox, last Friday, third choir, I believe it was formed, performed at GHS for the Meals on Wheels fundraiser, and it was a big hit. This month, students are focusing on like social, emotional learning and belonging this month. They've kind of been like, with the year, working on a different topic, whether it be like respect or compassion. And then for GHS, midterms finished a couple weeks ago, and all of our students are definitely relieved about that and getting settled in semester two classes.
Building off that, for GHS, we also had the Meals on Wheels concert here, which was, I heard a little bit when they were warming up, and wow, that was impressive. There's also, sports are having their senior nights, winter sports, which is going to be a bittersweet moment for most of the teams.
And then for the play, their set is getting built, and yeah, and once again, I think they're starting to sell tickets now. So if you want to visit their website, I think you can probably find it on the GHS school website. Yeah. Get your tickets. It's going to be amazing.
I've got mine.
It's going to sell out.
I've got mine.
I believe we emailed out to the parents through the taps at least.
Yes, it's going to sell out. You want to buy your tickets early.
Very excited.
Very interesting, very fun.
And it's that Meals on Wheels is a big success. I think the sound told us that we raised about $7,000.
That's fabulous.
All the donations, and it was a really nice experience for like performing and also like being there as well.
That's terrific. And midterms are done. Yay! Right?
Oh, my house is happy.
Sure.
No appreciation for us, no day, I mean, nothing.
Oh, yeah. Sleeping in was great. Sleeping in was great. That alarm.
Good stuff. Well, thank you so much. Great to, great to hear.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. We are up to the superintendent's agenda, superintendent's report on, and a budget update.
Yeah. Very briefly, we've been talking about budget a lot. I did just want to highlight, not so much for the board, but for the community that's watching, that at this point, this board did finalize their budget. You have a board budget at this point. I wanted to just go over a few points and remind the community at large. We began working on this budget back in October with public hearings. This year, we had a significant amount of public participation, which we always appreciate. We met with the leadership team. We began building the budget in district. And I do want to note, and I don't know that I've called this out before, but the budget proposal that I brought to the board in early January was already a reduction of $800,120 from the budgets that the principals and the department heads brought in to us, the leadership team and the business office. So the budget that we brought to all of you publicly in early January was $800,000 south of what the principals had proposed. I very much appreciate the work and the deliberation of this body. I very much appreciate the collaborative nature among the three boards this year as we looked at the medical impact, as we looked at the ability to look at our medical surplus fund, and want to remind the community that you, this board, finished your work by further reducing that budget by $730,090. That is a 1.5 million reduction from the budget that the principals brought forward in, in October, November of this year. That budget increase currently stands at a 5.5% increase as we now bring this budget to the Board of Finance on Thursday evening. So I also want to just note a few important dates. On February 13th, the Board of Education, and I will be there to support the board, will be presenting that budget, that five-and-a-half percent increase, to the Board of Finance formally for the first time. There are public hearings that are scheduled in front of the Board of Finance on March 4th. The public has an opportunity to speak in support of this budget, to share any concerns about the budget to the Board of Finance on March 4th. On March 6th, the Board of Finance will begin deliberating. They will hold their workshop in public to make any adjustments that they may choose to make to this budget. The Board of Finance additionally has an extra date scheduled for March 10th to continue those deliberations and that workshop, should they be necessary. On April 1st, we will be holding our town meeting, where the full-town budget goes before the town and is moved to the referendum, and we anticipate that date will be on April 8th. So some really important dates for the community to remember as we think about this budget that we move forward this year. The public hearing on the 4th, particularly important. The town meeting on April 1st, particularly important. And then again, the referendum on April 8th, for everybody to continue to have a voice in this process and to move forward a budget. This is a budget that I know the board shares these sentiments. It is a budget in a really difficult year with a lot of driving forces on this budget that don't necessarily come from our instructional vision from the schools. They are outside cost drivers that have impacted this budget. I am proud of the fact that this budget meets those demands and continues to center student learning and student thinking. It's not our most exciting budget. There's not a lot of new in this budget. We're not launching a new full-day kindergarten, or an international baccalaureate program, or really exciting programs. But we continue to center student thinking and student learning even while meeting these outside pressures and demands. And so again, I really want to express my appreciation to the Board of Finance and to the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to look at that medical surplus fund, and to this board for allowing us to center those kids in the middle of a really difficult budget year. Thank you, and we'll continue to support this budget moving forward.
Absolutely. And thank you for going over those dates. The one thing I'll add, and it's not a date that I can provide at this moment, but following the Board of Finance's public hearing and their own deliberations, if in their final vote, they choose to further reduce the Board of Education budget, we will then be taking that reduction back to this body and determining how to meet that reduction. The Board of Finance cannot tell us what to reduce, but they, but they can reduce the total amount if they determine that that would be best. And so we would then be either in a regularly scheduled meeting, adding it as an agenda item, or if necessary, creating a special meeting, and that would only be because of the timing of that decision. All right. Thank you. Any other questions on schedule? All right. Board agenda. 9.1 is to act on personnel items. We have been asked to ratify the resignation of two teachers. One, Christina Icarino.
Yeah, Icarino.
Thank you. A.W. Cox, grade one, 11 years of service. And Robin Calfean, A.W. Cox kindergarten, 25 years of service. I'm going to assume, I don't see it here, that these are all at the end of the year.
Yes, effective at the end of the school.
Effective at the end of the year. All right. Can I make just one little comment? You sure can.
Thank you. I apologize. The first item, Ms. Icarino, is effective.
January 17th of this year.
Of this year.
Yep.
And Mrs. Calfean is for the purposes of retirement, I believe, and it's effective at the end of the school year.
June 30th.
Yep.
And I just want to say personally, a huge and heartfelt thank you to Mrs. Calfean. She taught two of my girls, one she lived with for two years, and the impact to this day that she has had on my family and numerous, numerous families in this community cannot be overstated. So, just, yes.
I am absolutely going to second that. I have a 14-year-old who still remembers where she used to live and still says, as he drives by, that he wishes that she still lived there.
Yeah.
As that he could say hi. Huge impact. And even Christina was an amazing teacher. I worked with, I would see her come through the book fair, which I ran for many years at A.W. Cox. They are going to be very hard to replace, but I'm sure the district will do a good job. But lovely teachers and really sad to see them go.
Yes.
But understandable.
With our thanks.
25 years, yes. We typically separate out ratification for resignations and then retirements. Is the, or should we just do it all?
I think it's okay to approve it this time. We usually make that differentiation on the form, and I'll make sure that we do that with the exhibits in the future.
Excellent. So there is, so is there a motion then to ratify the resignation of these two teachers? And again, you've heard the appreciation for their service to Guilford Public Schools.
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's everyone. And then we will be needing, we must be working on a replacement for the teacher who has already resigned.
We already have.
We already have a replacement. That's excellent. All right. 9.2 is to act on the capital bonding project. So as part of the upcoming referendum that our community will be voting on in, in terms of budgets, the Board of Education will also be putting forth a bonding request. And so we, as a Board of Education, also need to vote on that proposed bonding estimate. So the proposal before us involves, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, sorry, well, six projects.
Correct.
And, and then an A and E, kind of an assessment and evaluation for future projects. This bonding estimate that we are being asked to vote on includes a project for the atom stream clearing, phase two and retainage design for $161,050. A Baldwin Middle School pond revitalization project for the amount of $142,128. Also at Baldwin Middle School, retaining wall rebuild for $100,674. At Calvin Leit, a chiller replacement, $272,412. At Guilford Lakes, an exterior window and door project. Among other things, this is a safety, security, efficiency project, $651,420. Fitness center equipment upgrades. We've heard from a number of the public in our community asking for the board and the administration to address the, what has been described as much older equipment in the current weight room at the Guilford High School. So this would be $367,640 for equipment upgrades. And then lastly, again, this A and E future projects for $228,592. The total here would be $1,923,916 for the bonding request. Dr. Freeman, is there anything you wanted to add as we consider this? I know we talked about this before, we talked about it again just in the Operations Committee meeting.
Yeah. No, I would only note that five of these six projects go to continued maintenance and upkeep. Three of them are about water control on the property to make sure that water does not damage the facilities. Two of them are around efficiency, efficiency around heating and cooling systems. One does that and combines it with safety and security concerns, as you noted. And the final one is simply the one item about which we heard the most public comment this year, a desire to make the weight room a more generally and broadly usable space than it has been over time. And so we're, we're excited to be able to move each of these projects forward for the different rationale, for the different reasons, that each one is important.
Okay. Much like we have an opportunity to review the proposed budget from Dr. Freeman and the administration, do any of my colleagues want to talk about any of these specific projects before we consider a vote? All right. Hearing none. I think there's, well, we'll find out with the vote in a second. But again, we've talked about these projects at our Operations Committee meeting as well, and appreciate the, the facility issues that they are each addressing. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the 2025 bonding request to put forth to the Board of Finance for consideration.
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's everybody. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, reports of committees. Policy Committee, do you have anything to report out?
I do not have a report. We are getting together next month.
All righty. Excellent. Operations Committee, again, we just met. Operations Committee, again, we just met. Anything that should be noted? I think it was a pretty straightforward meeting. All right. Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee?
We met a couple of weeks ago. Two major pieces on the agenda. One was a continuation of our discussion about implication of technology on social media on our students, and also then a summary of 23, 24, 22, 23 achievement data based on state standards.
Right. Excellent. All right. Any liaisons to town committees that have anything to report out? No? Okay. And no report on Learn. Okay, number 11 on the agenda, public comments. These do not necessarily have to be on the board agenda tonight. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and just give us your name and address if you'd like to participate.
Hi, my name is Sarah Salato, and I'm at Four Franklin's Way. Thank you to the board and Dr. Freeman for all the work that you do for our schools. I am certain there are many times that it may seem like thankless work. I come to you as not only the Guilford Pride Event Committee Chair, but also as a parent of a child who is part of an extremely marginalized group currently being targeted and threatened to have his own life shortened by this current administration. I am tired and I am sad. I honestly don't know how much fight I have left in me. However, I never thought the fight what I have left, that I have left, would be needed to get our own school district to show their love and support for the LGBTQ plus community. And yet, here I am. I have sent numerous emails and have spoken here a few times over the years. For whatever reason, my words and the silent cries of our own youth seem to be falling on deaf ears. I will not continue to come and ask you what I need to do in order for our schools to participate in this event, as I now have too many other things that I need to put my energy towards. But I do ask that you seriously consider my request. Seriously consider giving permissions to our schools to be involved in this pride event in any way that they would wish, or even just help us spreading the word of the event to our students. I wish that you would stand behind your words of being open, inclusive, supportive, and caring for all of our students. I wish you would show my child and all those like him, and believe me, there are many, that this United States of America may be letting them down, but here in Guilford, their home, you will stand up for what is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Any other closing comments or?
I just wish Ms. Sarah had stayed so we could acknowledge what she said and, and tell her that, I mean, personally, I hope that we can find a way to support the work that she does. It's just my opinion, it's not the opinion of the board, but I just feel that, especially in time like this, that we should be showing all of our students how much we support them. So, and our teachers and our administrators, so.
I will say, it's the third year that this event is happening. First year was extremely successful. It was unfortunate with the weather last year, but it was still extremely successful despite the weather.
A little soggy, definitely.
I think I wrung my, my clothes were soaked for three days.
Yeah.
It's a phenomenal event. There's a lot of community support, and honestly, the town supports it.
Yeah.
So the fact that the town supports it and we, as Guilford Schools, have not actually done anything to show support, it is a little hard, as I am on that committee with Sarah. So I'll disclose that. I do have a conflict because I do really think it's a wonderful thing that has been brought to this town, and she's really knocked it out of the park. I would like to see the schools support it in any way that we can, whatever that looks like. But happy to have a discussion about that with, with anybody.
Any other thoughts or, or comments?
I agree. And I don't think that's a conflict.
I think it's important.
I'm not sure I'm clear. Do we actually have a formal ban on?
No. There is no, there is no, there is no policy or position in place precluding any school, school employee, or school representative group from participating in this event. For the first two years, the schools have not. And I appreciate Sarah's comments, and I will make clear to the principals and the PTOs this year that our schools have every opportunity to participate in this event in May in the same way that they participate in Fair Weekend or Memorial Day or other events. It would be a voluntary inclusion. No student would be required to. No student would be encouraged or receive any kind of bonus for participating. No student would receive any kind of penalty for not participating. It will be open to school participation this year.
Mm-hmm.
And I appreciate the comments. They are.
I'm sorry that she left before she could hear that herself, but we'll make sure she hears it.
I'm sure that the information will get, will get back to the group.
Absolutely.
Probably in the next 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Freeman.
And I do think, I, I know, well, a number of us have attended in the last couple of years, and I think a number of, a large number of our, our community have. So certainly, there has been that, that kind of support, but, but, but understand that, that it has perhaps not felt like it has been a school presence.
The schools have not been visibly present over the last two years.
And I appreciate that.
It's a, it's a new event, and they have, they have simply not been visibly present for the first two years. The comments are, are well-earned and appreciated.
All right, and then we can, we can certainly reach out to Ms. Salata.
Yeah.
Anyone who, who wishes to do that. All right, there is no other public here, so I think that ends the, the public comments. I am gonna ask for, oh, I'm sorry, I am gonna just repeat that the, something that was brought up at the beginning, or I'm sorry, during Dr. Freeman's presentation. So the, the Board of Education will be presenting our budget to the Board of Finance this Thursday evening. That is a, a public meeting, certainly if anyone is interested in joining. It is at the Community Center.
Yep.
And then we will certainly be in attendance as the Board of Finance on the dates that Dr. Freeman noted, March 4th, which is the public hearing in front of the Board of Finance, March 6th, and if necessary, they will carry on to March 10th. We have difficulty being there because we have a meeting at the same time, but we will certainly be representing, be representing the Board at all those meetings and want to continue to make herself available to the Board of Finance as they consider the budget. All right, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Exactly.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Go right ahead.
I was wondering, with the issues going on in Washington at this point around, say, the Department of Education, are there any things that, any ways that that impacts us, the way that we operate, any concerns that we have about that?
So we're watching it, yeah, thank you. I appreciate the question.
It's an important question.
We're watching it really carefully. So at this point, there are no immediate or direct impacts. The most concerning and the one that we're watching the most carefully, and in fact, this is relatively small in Guilford compared to a lot of other communities, but still significant. Should the Department of Education shut down their Title IX grants? So any, not Title IX, any title grants that come out of the federal, out of the federal level. The most direct way that the Department of Education and the federal government impacts local schools is by monies that they direct towards the school system. Should those title grants be stopped in DC, it's a loss of approximately a million dollars to Guilford Public Schools. Now, that is small by comparison compared to a lot of other communities. We're watching both whether or not that could happen immediately and impact this year, which would create a hole in this year's spending. We would have to look at how many of those grants have been received, how many we have already expended, and whether or not we would have to make changes to this year's possible budget. It could create a hole big enough that we would possibly need to return to the town and ask for, ask for an additional allocation in the middle of the school year if we thought that that loss would keep us from closing the year in the black. We don't anticipate that, but that is the most immediate concern. We've got a budget that we've designed for next year that is moving forward, that assumes those grants. Should those be lost moving forward, there would have to be adjustments made to next year's budget moving forward. The simplest way to think about that is that if we lost those million dollars, we would have two choices in Guilford. We would either have to eliminate those services as they're currently provided to students and not spend those dollars, or we would have to find a million more dollars that it would be absorbed by the taxpayers of Guilford if we needed to adjust a budget or just build them in moving forward. So that's the most immediate concern, and we are keeping an eye on that. As was mentioned earlier, there have been executive orders, and we know that there are activities happening around immigration. So we released a letter to our community explaining to our parent community how we would respond should our schools be pulled into any situation where we were expected to participate in sharing of information or checking any student's status, or possibly allowing immigration officers access to students. And our response is laid out in that communication, and we will translate that into other, other, other languages as well. Jumping back to the idea about the Department of Education, I'm certainly concerned about a loss of a million dollars locally in Guilford. I'm more concerned about the message that it sends to suggest that agriculture and transportation and commerce are more important than the exercise of public education, and that public education would no longer be a cabinet-level exercise the way that commerce and agriculture and transportation are. I think it's simply, I mean, and I've chosen it as my career, but I think it's simply one of the most important things that we do as a country, as a nation, as a community. And I don't like the suggestion that it's no longer important enough to, to remain at the cabinet level. We're watching a lot of things that are happening. We've got concerns about the messages it sends to students about, about their immigration status. We've got concerns about the messages it sends to students about who they are. We've got financial concerns, but none of them are concretely impacting us today. We are getting almost daily updates from the State Department of Education, from the Connecticut Superintendent's Association, from the Connecticut Business Directors Association, from all of the local education law firms in the state of Connecticut. We're getting updates. We're being invited to webinars. We're monitoring it all as closely as we absolutely can. I really appreciate the question because we're monitoring it in the office nine to five and not commenting for the community to let them know how closely we're monitoring all of this. And when we feel we need to make a statement, as we did with the immigration letter, we'll make a statement or ask for an emergency meeting and make the kinds of decisions that we need to make.
And I will just add that on the state level, very much the same thing is happening. It's, you know, it's like a cloudy crystal ball where we can't really predict what's gonna play out, but we're kind of operating on two tracks. One, because it's the by-end of year to create the budget, and then so we're kind of staying on track A, but if we have to switch to track B to address some of these deficits, to your point, some of these other districts that really rely largely on federal funding, we'll have to see what happens. But our motto is, we'll deal with it when we actually see verifiable proof that it's actually playing out. And then until then, I think we're smart to just stick with our budgetary plan, just from a state perspective.
Until something more concrete comes out. And in one of the written answers as part of this budget process, I reminded the boards in one of my written responses that in large part, and particularly because Guilford relies so little on federal funding, but in large part and predominantly, public education continues to be an exercise of the state and local control. And so executive orders that are issued that impact federal agencies or federal employees have little impact on, on local public education, where we will continue to follow directives from Hartford and from this locally-elected Board of Education. Those two organizations are predominantly responsible for the exercise of public education in Guilford. And while the, while the messaging and while the million dollars are important, they are not as important as decisions that this board makes or that the State Department of Education or the governor or the elected bodies of Connecticut will make. Those will have a much more immediate impact upon our work here on a daily basis. I really do appreciate that question. Maybe we should have opened there.
It's an important question. Any other before I ask for an adjournment? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us tonight. Good evening.